Call to question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Minutes or the agenda is approved as presented. Next item is the review of the minutes from the regular meeting of February 7th. Are there any comments on those minutes? Brian?
No, I have none.
Steve?
No.
Jim?
No, no comment.
Ann?
No.
Eric?
No.
Entertainer motion to approve the minutes as submitted?
I move approval.
Motion for Ann, support?
Second.
Support from Eric. Call to question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Minutes are approved. We'll move now to the next item, which is public comment, an opportunity to citizens for citizens to speak to the commission about any item not on the agenda. Is there anyone who would like to speak to us about something not on the agenda? Okay. Seeing no hands, we'll move to the first item of business, which is a public hearing, sketch plan, a sketch plan review to install accessory waterfront structure, a jet ski lift. The applicant is Michael Colmer Esquire, 2915 Biddle, Suite 200 in Wyandotte, on behalf of the property owner Randall Pentiok, 30013 East River, Groseal. Before I go on, I want to bring to everybody's attention the fact that Mr. Pentiok is a partner of my attorney. I don't do any business with him. I don't, I deal with his partner, but I want to make sure that's devolved and see if anybody thinks that constitutes conflict of interest.
I don't, my personal opinion it does not.
Okay, I would ask please for a motion to that effect, that I can continue with this hearing.
So moved.
Have a motion from Eric, support?
Second.
Support from Steve.
All in favor of the motion to allow me to continue without a conflict of interest, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On that basis, I will continue. The location of this legally is Lot 52 of Hickory Island. The common description is 30013 East River Road. This is actually located almost at the very south end of Hickory Island on East River. I think it's one house up to the north from the, from the very end of East River. The proposal is to install a jet ski lift on an existing dock structure. The zoning is R1F, single-family residential. The relevant ordinance here is Article 17 waterfront provisions, and specifically Section 17.4 dealing with waterfront requirements, and 17.5 public hearing procedure. The process is outlined in Article 17 as follows. First, an application is received at the township, and basically this is a building permit request. At this point, the township then notifies the neighbors that a, an application for the waterfront has been submitted to the township. Then there's a, I believe, a 20-day waiting period, okay? And if anybody who has received the notification, or any other citizens for that matter, wants to request a public hearing, they do so, and then it gets scheduled in front of the planning commission. And that is the process that has happened tonight, and so we are at the step of the public hearing for this particular application. In this case, under Article 17, the planning commission is the final decision-maker. So this does not go to the board, it's, the decision is made here. So, and I would expect that the planning commission will vote on this matter tonight. With that introduction, I'd like to ask Brian, please, if you would be so kind as to run through the technical details that you presented in your, your review for the commission.
Absolutely, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much. You've done a fine summary of the process, so I'm just going to bypass all of that. I think we all know why we're here and under what ordinances were appearing this evening on this particular case. What I do want to speak to is a little bit of the background, just so you know where this has been, and kind of how we got here beyond just the notification process. Back in 2008, this same property owner and petitioner requested the installation of a dock with a, with a jet ski lift hoist element with it. They obtained both state and Army Corps permits for the project. However, it's my understanding, based on the history, that they were not able to obtain association approval for the lift component, but they did get association approval for the dock component. As such, the applicant moved forward with the dock, but sort of pushed the lift component to the side for a number of years, as it turns out. The dock has been installed, so there is in fact a dock here, as noted in the plans that are included in your package. So really, what's occurred is, over the last three years, the applicant has decided he now wants to pursue that hoist element, and so that's what has brought us back here. The Army Corps permit, under which the project was originally authorized, is still valid. So the jet ski component is still valid under the Army Corps permit. There was a timing concern with the state permit, and that was one of the things that sort of has delayed this project for the past couple of months. However, the applicant did obtain an extension to their permit. So as you see noted in my letter, they do have currently valid DNRE and Army Corps permits to carry out this project. So that's, that's kind of a little history that I at least wanted to touch upon. In terms of the actual review standards of your ordinance, you have placement requirements, you have number limitations, you have clear water passage requirements. As noted in my review letter, the structure is located such that it meets your placement requirements. The structure would be a permitted hoist. You can have up to two on a given site, and there's also a limitation on the number of boats or personal watercraft you can store, based on the size of your property. For each 40 feet, you can have one boat and one personal watercraft. In this case, the applicant has 33 feet, so there are limitations within which they will have to comply, really whether or not this project moves forward or not. They still have to meet those same standards. Based on the submittal, it certainly appears they would meet those standards. Again, we've got a dock to which he can moor one boat. Now we would have a jet ski lift or a hoist device to which he could have his personal watercraft. So that element is compliant as well. In terms of the clear water passage, that, in my opinion, is not an issue at all. We're dealing with a situation where if you look at your plans, it is a T-shaped dock. The hoist element is between the dock and the shoreline, so it does not extend out farther into the water than the dock does. It actually is contained within that same structure. So we certainly don't see any issues, especially considering the waterway that we're dealing with here. No issues in terms of the passable waterway. The last two elements of my review letter, one is simply a comment. There is no lighting that is shown in the submittal. However, you do have lighting restrictions in the ordinance for waterfront structures. So if that type of an element is proposed, the applicant's going to have to provide that detail. Certainly, I believe Mr. Corman has a presentation for you tonight, so I'm hoping he can address that at that point. If it is, if it is not clear, or if they are uncertain whether they want lighting, and you want to move forward with this, I would encourage you to consider attaching a condition if you were to look favorably upon the request. It should go without saying, but I think it's better if it's put down and it's formal as part of an action, that all lighting must comply with ordinance regulations. And then the last one is just a general statement in terms of all waterfront structures, and that relates to a requirement that they may be maintained in a safe condition and in good repair. Again, goes without saying, it's a requirement of your ordinance, but I think having it cemented into an action or a motion as a condition, I think would be appropriate. But again, those would only be if you're going to consider favorable action at the end of this hearing tonight.
Thank you, Brian. Do any commissioners have any questions for Brian before we move to the applicant? Okay. Mr. Corbo, welcome to the planning commission. Would you like-
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Good evening. Would you like to please introduce your project to us?
Yes, my name is Michael Corman, and I'm here representing Mr. Randall Pentuck. He lives at 30013 East River, and, which is at the very southern end of Hickory Island, well, actually the Hickory Island Corporation. Hickory Island extends a couple houses south of that point, but he is the second-to-last house south that has membership in the corporation. And as Mr. Borton said, he is applying for an extension of his dock and a jet ski hoist, and that's the matter before you. What I've done is kind of just create a little presentation here, which I passed out to you all, and is also on the overhead here, with just some pictures of the neighborhood and a couple other handouts. So I'll go ahead and get started on that. The first picture here is from Mr. Pentuck's porch, really, which we, on Hickory, I grew up on Hickory myself, so we always refer to it as the front. The front yard is the waterside. So this is his front porch, if you will. And bear with me, because my laser poiser doesn't show up too great here, but the hoist is going to be right in there, kind of the left, it doesn't really show up on there, but the left, the left part of the dock, close to where it, close to the right angle, is where the hoist will be. It's going to measure about 10 by 10, and will be able to retract up and down, and will the vast majority of the time be in the downward position with the jet skis, which will only be on there in, you know, in the summer months, anyway. So moving to the next slide, it's just a closer view. And again, the hoist is going to be, bear with me, and right about there at that point on the dock, so on the northern, on the northern part of it.
I think you have a mouse there you can manipulate, by the way.
Right. So it's a much better idea. Right about there, about 10 by 10, by our estimation. So moving to the next slide I have. This is from the view immediately to the south from the residence. Now, as you're looking to the left part of the frame, that's where the dock is. And again, the, the hoist is going to be right about there. So with the fact, I mean, of course, there's the tree there, but the dock and the hoist are, you know, minimally visible and pose a minimal obstruction. And that, that is what the, basically the main concern of Hickory Island is, I'm not speaking for the corporation as a whole, but just in general residents on Hickory, you know, it's a special place because the view and the breeze and from the water are so different than most other places on the island. So the goal is to have an unobstructed view, which, you know, I always enjoyed living there growing up. So that's what we want to bear in mind, that we don't want to obstruct anyone's view, and we think that, that the dock and the proposed hoist are not going to pose that threat. Moving on to the next one. This is a closer view from that property right to the south. It's basically, you can see Mr. Pentuck's T-shaped dock as it exists to the, to the left there. And you'll notice how the ground kind of slopes down as you get closer to the seawall. The next slide here is from the, a view from the residence immediately to the north of the owners. And from this vantage point, which is taken pretty close to his porch, so as to simulate what he would see, he or she would see looking out of their porch, there's just almost no obstruction from the dock, and we feel that the hoist, when added, will pose just a very minimal, if any, obstruction whatsoever. It certainly won't block the waterway, because it's contained within the dock, kind of like Mr. Borton said, so it's not going to be any obstruction there. And also, what should have been in the plan, which I apologize for not having in there, there will be no lighting. He's not going to install lighting on either the dock or the hoist, so that won't be a Also note in this picture, you'll see the size, you'll see the size of the proposed dock in comparison with the dock immediately to the south. Certainly, the dock to the south extends a lot farther out, and it also has an accompanying David, as you can see, which serves as kind of an obstructive view there. Not really relevant to our case per se, but just kind of as a point of comparison. And that, the David there also, right there, also protrudes pretty well, David, excuse me, the David protrudes pretty well above the water's level. And going to the next, this is just kind of a close-up from that same vantage point. You know, like I said, you know, having grown up here, I always enjoyed these views. It's just, as it is, it's just a clear, beautiful, breezy view, which is what we all want, and which is, which will not be interrupted by this project. And then this is two parcels to the north. You can see the dock is right here. Again, because of the sloping in the ground, the visibility as you go farther north, the visibility of the dock decreases the farther north you go, because the slope goes down towards the sea level. The proposed hoist is barely visible from this view, and this, again, was taken very close to that resident who lives two parcels to the north of the owner's property, taken very close to his porch. Going forward, this is three parcels to the north. Here, you can see, mostly because of the slope, and this was taken a little closer to the water than the other ones, there was a dog in the house barking at me, so I didn't want to get too close. But as you can see, because of the slope, though, this is where the dock would be, the dock from this vantage point is pretty much invisible. Of course, that's, you know, it's a little different, because, you know, the closer you are, the bigger the slope, so that angle's going to come into play. So that's three parcels to the north. And then four parcels to the north. You can see right here, only really the northern end of the dock is going to be visible. The hoist point, the hoist part, excuse me, that I'm pointing to right here, is pretty much behind the David here, and the hoist, which would contain one jet ski, is pretty much visible from this vantage point. And then this is a little bit farther up Hickory Island. It's closer towards the middle. I think it's about 10 parcels north of the subject property. Here you can see right here clearly a boat hoist, and according to the research that I did here at the township, that was installed in 1987. It was actually given approval by the Hickory Board in 1987 to install this, and from the research we did, it measures about 12 by 16 feet. And again, the one proposed, that issue is going to be about 10 by 10. I actually have a hand, the next sheet on your handout, it doesn't appear up here, because I couldn't figure out how to make it part of this, but is actually a copy of the Hickory Island Company's approval for the plans for this hoist, which was given on July 24th, 1987. Let's see. And in the document filed in that, you will see, it was submitted to this planning commission on September 2nd, 1987, and thus approved. So we have 10 houses away, an even bigger hoist, that would certainly, I mean, as you can see right there, that is taken from very close to that owner's front porch, a minimal obstruction, and the one that we're proposing is even smaller than that. And that was, that was granted and approved. Not really sure under what standards or what review, because they weren't articulated in the correspondence from Hickory Island that you have there. But in its 23 and a half years of existence, not one complaint has ever been lodged about this hoist or this part of the dock. And we did, under the Freedom of Information Act, review that file here at the township, and we found no complaints for that. So that's just kind of a basis of comparison in the same neighborhood. And then, the final thing you'll see, it's actually in the last page of your packet here, is a memorandum from Bill Look, who's a Groseal Township attorney. And it's his opinion that the township here isn't obligated to enforce the requirements of an association such as Hickory Island. It is a private association, it's a private corporation. And Mr. Look's opinion was that the local requirements, if the local requirements and necessary permits have been obtained for this, which as Mr. Borton said, the township ordinances have been met, they've been satisfied, and the permits have been received and they're current, if those are up to par, which they are, then the township would be required to grant approval for the requested use. Basically, on behalf of Mr. Pentuck, you know, we've both reviewed this, Mr. Borton's opinions, and we agree with them wholeheartedly. Basically, he made our case for us, and we, you know, we deferred his expertise, and we agree with his assessment of the facts and the issues. Again, there's no conflicts with any township ordinances here. And the one issue were the lights, which I should have had, you know, in the plan, and I do apologize for that, but there will be no lights on this dock whatsoever. And again, the permits from the Army Corps and the state are all valid and current. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Corbo. If you would have a seat, I'm going to open up the public hearing now, and I'm sure along the way, there may be some, there will be some questions, so just kind of stand by, if you would.
Oh, sure. I actually got a few more slides I can show.
Do you have more slides to show?
Well, they're going to come after the rest of the questions, so.
Okay. All right. Then at this point, I will formally open the public hearing for the, the application to install the jet ski lift as an accessory waterfront structure. Who would like to speak, please? And whoever would, please raise your hand, and when I call on you, give me your name and your address, and we'll hear what there is to say. Yes, sir, come on up. Welcome to the planning commission. Come on up to the microphone, please, if you would, so everybody in the audience can hear you clearly.
My name is William Swayze. I reside at 30,007 East River Road, which is the house immediately to the east of where this hoist is going to be. I'm also president of the Hickory Island Company, who also has some concerns about this. But we, our very first concern is, is getting approval on the basis of a sketch of this quality. As we look at this, we don't have an elevation, we don't have any information at all as to what the size of it is going to be, or the weights, or what, how high it's going to be above the dock, and all those questions. So they're not shown on here. And this is not an engineering drawing, this is like you've said, it's a sketch. We have reasons, based on 90 years of experience with waterfront, for worrying about situations like this. For instance, on a given storm, we would get water that would hit our seawall and actually fly 45, 50 feet to the residence. So we do get some pretty good weather over there. And anybody who lives along there will testify to that. There have been people who have tried to put structures like this out in the front, and after a while, they abandon them, and they're left for somebody else to take care of, or it becomes an eyesore, because there's so much difficulty in maintaining any kind of boat, or jet ski, or anything at these locations. That we do have the experience, year before last, where they had jet skis tied up there, one broke away, went out and became a hazard of navigation, and they had to send somebody out to get it, get it out of the channel, and bring it back. As recently as last fall, Mr. Pentiok had a boat tied up there also, and that boat, in the course of a storm, was mostly destroyed on the left rear part of the boat by smashing against the ski wall, seawall. You see here that there are Davits mentioned. The Davits that are mentioned are strictly ornamental. There was, they don't, they do not work in that situation. In order to make a David work to lift a boat in and out, you have to have an extremely large and lengthy David. The experience has been with people that take boats in and out over there, is that eventually they will smash the boat up. And as our historian, Mr. Hartwell, says, "Mother Nature does its job." We have example after example after example of this. Take the, the residence to the west, where in this gentleman's report, he refers to it as a similar apparatus to the one that's prescribed here. Actually, that, that particular lift was brought in, so to speak, at night, and put in without any permits or anything of that nature, nor was it asked for approval to any of the authorities or the Hickory Island Company. And eventually, this person was fined and charged by the Army Corps of Engineers, and we have letters to the effect that they were about ready to place legal restraints on him, actually go to a lawsuit in order to make him. And what happened, and what has happened typically, is that he, he took this boat, which was a rubber raft, by the way, for the small one-half horse engine operating off a battery. So it was just a small, and he left it up there, and he had some trouble with it, eventually he abandoned it. Shortly thereafter, he moved and put the house up for sale. It was vacant for several years, and then it was taken over by a developer, and she had it for four, five years, and then it went into foreclosure. Presently, the house has been bought by a local citizen, and it is his intention to take that down. We represent 42 residences on Hickory Island. I don't know how familiar many of you are with what Hickory Island is, but it's basically an association. When you buy property on Hickory Island, you get shares in the company. You become an owner. And the Hickory Island Company owns 31 boat dock wells. We have a seven-acre site. We have tennis courts. We have swings. We have a golf course, which is in and out of repair. We have a tremendous amount of value there, but our greatest value is our panoramic view and the safety of the people who boat there at the perimeter. You see that just yesterday, there was an emergency where there was a boating accident in the area, and the people had to be rescued. When one, when one buys property on Hickory and accepts our bylaws, on which we all live and get along, it is incumbent upon him to follow those bylaws. And so, the question then remains, at what point do our bylaws have strength over whether or not someone gets a permit somewhere because it meets certain standards? The 42 people that we represent, and they're not all here, but we have five or six of them, in a, in a survey that was taken the year before last, 80% of them said they don't want that kind of apparatus, either in the front, nor the, nor the things which it brings. I, I don't know how one could actually okay this kind of an application. It doesn't, it doesn't meet the standards, and we object to that. So we have a lot of reasons for worrying about and being very concerned about what goes there and how it's treated. For instance, even these dimensions here, when, when we approved the dock, and I wasn't on the board of directors at that time, a four-foot wide dock, as you see by these dimensions, was, was approved. The dock is now five foot and some inches wide. So there were reasons, one of the reasons that they offered when we approached them about this was, "Well, we had some difficulty in putting in the pilings, so we made it larger." And then there was also a handicap reason for making it larger, but there is no, no one handicap, nor is there any handicap structure. So we, we don't want to be in a situation where someone takes advantage of what we have done. The Stoyanovich property, which is now the Sims property, and that situation there with that particular lift, was such that the, there was an approval made for it, but it's what we call ATF, after the fact. In other words, this was already in and installed and things like that. And our president, president at the time, has now deceased. But basically, based on all our rules, they don't have the right to go and approve something that's been installed after the, after the fact. So as far as we're concerned, that particular situation has no merit. The, the question even there, if you, if you look at that in the photos that you saw, you wonder about egress, the getting in there and getting out of there. For instance, on Friday morning, there was less than two feet of water at that, at that particular area where you would come in and try to bring the boat in and then circle around, actually, you need more than 10 feet in order to do that, but to circle in and bring it in. So I don't know what happens in that kind of a situation. We also had water right up to the top of the seawall, and we've had water over the seawall. So these are hazards that have to be thought of, and that's why we want to be so sure that we know exactly what we have here. Is there anything, any of the members here would like to add to this? I don't want to, we've got situations that are currently fluid on the island. We always have people, we have a set of drawings right here, where one of our residents has asked us to approve an addition on the back, and that's, and that's a right that we have. us to approve an addition on the back, and that's, and that's a right that we have, as being part of an association. And he's made the proper, these are all engineered drawings, he's made the proper submittal, he's gotten the okay of people on either side, a couple houses in each direction, and when we review this later, this is the kind of thing that goes right through without any problems, or any, any argument at all. You may recognize Mr. Hartwell, he's our historian, he's also our most senior member, and he's been a lifelong resident of Hickory Island. And he keeps our, not only our history, but he keeps us up to date as to what, and what that style of living means, and what it takes to keep it. So, on the basis of that, we're objecting to the fact that we don't have all these dimensions, that this isn't a proper submittal, and we're objecting for safety reasons also. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Swayze. Let's see, is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Will there be any?
Yeah, there will, I have collected questions, and when I, when I hear the last of the questions, then I'm going to feed them off, and we're going to get answers to these questions. Yes, sir, come on up.
My name is Manfred Lastemigre, 29797 East River Road, I'm the treasurer of Hickory Island.
What was your last name again, please?
E-G-E-R-E-R, good American name.
Yes, sir, welcome.
What Bill forgot to mention is Hickory Island has its own yacht club. Because the waters are so rough on our side of the lake, we have basically the means for very little money to have our boats in our own yacht club. And we actually entertained to Mr. Pentyuk, that the yacht club would even build jet ski lifts inside the yacht club. Hickory Island Board approved to contribute to the cost of it, so we basically don't have these vehicles in front of the waterside, get damaged, get drifted away, and we have them in protected area. The Hickory Island Yacht Club is right across from the Grosse Yacht Club. And Mr. Pentyuk has one or two boats there?
Two.
Two boats there. So, when he goes down to go to his boats, I think he can also go down to go to his jet skis. And I'm a member of the board, and I think you guys are a member of the board, and if you would get a drawing like this, and expect an approval, I don't think you would approve a building, or anything with something like this, and I don't think we can either. We are not saying as board members that we wouldn't approve it, but based on what we have in front of us, we can't, okay? But I think the option to go to Hickory Island Yacht Club and take the offer, I think, I don't understand why that is not being considered. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Additional questions or comments from the audience?
Yeah.
Okay, yes, sir.
Yeah.
Please, your name and your address.
John Leon, 29815, I'm also on the board. The, the description of the lift itself was 10 by 10, and it was said that it would be within the left arm, or T of the dock. But by hearing the discussion today, that, that, that arm would only be seven and a half feet, and we're talking that the, that the ski lift would be 10 by 10, so it would be overhanging the edge of the dock, you know, I'm not sure if that's an issue, but it certainly is, is not as described tonight, being inside, and being inside the perimeter of the, of the dock itself.
Thank you, sir. Additional comments or questions? Seeing no hands, I'll bring it back to the table, and entertain a motion, please, to close the public hearing. Motion for man, support.
Second.
Support for mayor, call a question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, the public hearing is closed. Okay, let's, let's get some, answer these questions. Mr. Cormal, would you please come on back up to the, to the microphone? And we're going to run through these issues, and we're going to have a talk about them.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, can I actually?
Just a moment. Okay, I'm going, I'm going to cover the questions, and then you can speak.
Okay.
Okay, we're going to start off with the issue of a sketch plan, okay? And what it says in the ordinance is about sketch plans, as to what they are and what they aren't, and, and how, how this sketch plan concept lines up with the concerns that you, you're here to hear about, dimensions and the like. Would you talk to that issue, please?
Sure.
Fundamentally, the issue is, why don't we have engineering drawings?
Because they're not required.
Why is that exact?
Yeah, A, they're not required.
Okay.
And B, again, a sketch plan is a, a plan of far less detail than a full, complete site plan. These, I'll be honest with you, these drawings are absolutely no different than any other waterfront drawings that come through this township, and there are dozens of applications approved every year, they're approved by the state, they're approved by Army Corps. I personally, are they the greatest things ever? Are they full engineered site plans? No. But, again, I don't think they have to be, A, and B, they're sufficient, in my opinion, for the review that's before you.
Okay, now, these are, the sketch plan requirements are defined in our ordinances?
Yes.
Okay, so we're following the ordinances, and this is consistent with other submittals?
Absolutely. This is probably better than most submittals, quite frankly.
Okay, then, then I want to, want to take the next question that came out. Basically, the difference, the differences in, in dimensions, 10 by 10 versus 7 and a half by whatever?
The, the jet ski-
And then how, how is that regulated by the township?
The jet ski itself, the lift, I cannot speak to that, you're going to have to, I have to defer to the applicant. If you're speaking to the width of the dock, you'll note in the Army Corps application, it is noted that they did approve a modification, in terms of the width of the dock, that was one of the items that was raised earlier. In terms of the size of the lift, I have to defer to the applicant, all I can do is review off of the plans that were given. I would suggest, based on the general scale that's shown here, that is not a 10 by 10 lift that's shown on the plan. It would appear to be smaller than that.
Okay, so, let's, let's park that discussion for a minute, and we're going to go back over here.
Can I, can I hit one point?
Yes, sir.
Just to follow up, because the key being, ultimately, is, is an ordinance requirement that relates to the placement of the structure, and also, the placement of a boat or a watercraft that is stored on the structure, and that's where the minimum six-foot setback comes in. So, according to the plans we have, the edge of the dock is 10 feet from the property line. If this hoist encroaches, or essentially goes beyond the edge of that dock, you know, we're starting to run into some pretty tight space there. So I guess we should, we should put some clarification to that this evening, we need to know how big that's going to be, and exactly where it's going to be located, because we have a set of plans in front of us that show something, and it does not appear to be consistent with what we're hearing.
Okay, so essentially, clarification of dimensions, as it relates to side yard setback?
Correct. And also the storage of the boat.
Yeah, side yard setback.
Exactly, exactly.
And the second point was, any other dimensional issues, the seven being, okay, the fact, the fact that it's, you know, it's talked about as 10 by 10 versus 7 and a half by 10, is that a factor in, in our township ordinances?
Only if it were to conflict with the six-foot separation or setback requirement.
Okay, so the key issue here, from your point, is we have to be certain that we are, we are greater than six feet away, six feet or greater from that-
Absolutely.
From that side yard setback.
Absolutely.
Okay, well, before I leave, before I leave you, let's, let's, let's cover a couple of these other points. Okay, what is, what is the rule, what is the, what do the ordinances say about issues such as water levels? If the water level is either very high or very low, is that a factor in planning commission decision-making relative to a waterfront application? Or is that, in fact, a D and R, Army Corps?
Yeah, I don't see where it has any place in your review, quite frankly.
Okay, so it's, it's actually a use factor for the applicant, but not a determining factor from the township?
If they were proposing dredging as part of the request, it would certainly be part of the conversation, but-
Okay, so we need, we need to confirm whether there's any intent to do anything other than simply put this in, without dredging. Okay? We'll ask that question. We also, okay, other issues with, with, you know, basically, the safety. Okay, the boats that have been washed away, or basically, you know, out from the dock, or, or the like, okay, what, what role does that play in, in what we review?
Well, it's, it's an unfortunate circumstance, but I don't believe it plays any role in your review. We're looking at a waterfront structure, it has to be maintained, if approved, and operated in a safe condition.
Okay, so damage that might occur as a result of ice, or storms, or whatever?
Leaving the boat untied.
Leaving the boat untied, whatever it might be, okay, that's, that's, as long as, as long as the, as the structure that we approve is maintained, and the status that it was, that it was originally approved, then the applicant has met the requirements. Is that a correct statement?
Yes.
Okay, so maintenance is, maintenance is a key thing. Okay, is there anything in our ordinance relative to whether, you know, you know, the fact that there is a separate yacht club, you know, kind of around the corner? What bearing does that have on, on our, our ordinances?
In my opinion, it has none. You're looking at a private hoist, as a waterfront structure for a private residential property. There is no requirement that says you must first seek out alternatives.
So, okay, okay, so, so what I'm hearing, okay, there is a, the issues that are being raised, okay, are important issues for Hickory Island, but they're not necessarily supported by the ordinances that, that, that we regulate waterfront developments on, is that, is that a correct statement?
I would agree with that, yes.
Okay, all right, well, let's, let's now go back to the applicant, we'll hear these, and then I'm going to go around the table, and like everybody do, to chime in at that point. Okay, we've heard, we've heard several things. First, we've heard some uncertainty about dimensions.
Correct.
As they relate to the side yard. What are the dimensions of this, okay, and how do they relate to the six feet?
I can best answer that, Mr. Chairman, but I was going to say earlier, our engineer, who's actually going to construct this hoist, of course, contingent upon this commission's approval, is with us, his name is Chris Paquette, and he's sitting here, and I am not, and I'm not an engineer, you know, I did not draw these plans, but he knows more about the specifications and the measurements than I do, which is, I think, where he could provide some clarity on that issue. So I was going to ask if he may come up.
Absolutely, come on up and talk with us, please. Welcome, sir.
How you doing, gentlemen?
Great.
For clarifications, I'm a contractor, I build hoists, I'm not an engineer, and these drawings were done by Zat Marine, when I got in the middle of the picture, so that's why these drawings are where they are. As far as, it's a double jet ski lift, it's going to be 10 by 10, you need that kind of area to put two jet skis on, to safely board it and get off it. The jet ski will raise level with the top of the dock. You know, yeah, we do get some storms, but typically, you know, the summer months, you know, it's usually pretty nice, I mean, yeah, you get some storms, but the jet skis will be high and clear out of the water, you know, and they're jet-driven, so I don't see a problem if they get with lower water.
I'm a little bit ignorant about this, what exactly, when you say a lift, what is that? I mean, what, what comes out of the water?
Well, basically-
Out of straps?
You have two four-inch H beams that get driven vertically against the dock, you know, like this.
Okay.
And then you have two arms that slide inside the beams, and then you have a platform that's made out of two-by-two quarter-inch angle and expanded metal, and that sets on top of the two arms. And that, depending on how you place that, you can pull the jet skis to the west, or you can turn it to where you pull the jet skis from the north to the south, depending on how you want to go off and on. But it just, it's a motor, it's gear-driven, runs a 220 single-phase, and all it does is lift and raise out of the water, it just goes up and down. And the one part of the board of the jet skis, one sits on two-by-sixes, the other one sits on two-by-twelve, so whichever jet ski you use the most when you come down, obviously the one that's on the smaller boards will become buoyant first, so the other one still stays up above the water. And that's basically how it works, it's just got a switch, and it just goes up and down, and rises up out of the water.
Okay. And is this for year-round storage? Is this for just the summer?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't, you can, I mean, it's basically, you know, owner discretion, but I think Mr. Pentuck usually keeps them in a warehouse over the winter months to keep them out of the weather.
All right, so this is, this is, this is summer use?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
He has a trailer, he has a trailer for them.
So, so the overall dimensions of this are, are in fact 10 by 10?
That is correct.
Okay, and how, okay, so Brian, 10 by 10, what's, what's, do we have adequate information? Is there adequate clarity to confirm that they conform, or do not conform to the ordinances?
One point, and then I'll follow up with that. Hearing further elaboration, I am a little concerned in, in the description of it as a double jet ski lift, I do not believe that's permitted by your ordinance, and it has never been presented as a double jet ski lift, at least to me, personally. So, you have a limitation on the number of boats and personal watercraft that can be stored on properties. It's based on a 40-foot, it's based on a 33-foot frontage, one boat, one personal watercraft per 33 feet. This property owner has 40 feet, the way this ordinance has always been applied, is that you have to have the full 33 feet to qualify for that additional boat and that additional watercraft. So in my opinion, installing a double jet ski hoist would be allowing two personal watercraft, when in fact, there's a limitation of one for this property. So, that's, that's one issue that, that I have.
Now, when you, when you say, okay, before you leave that, okay, so, one for 33 feet, not two?
One boat and one personal watercraft.
One, okay, one and one.
Correct.
Okay, and this is proposing one and two? Okay, so that's an issue. So what else, what else were you about to say?
Well, the other is, if, I was, I was just going to hope you would bear with me, because I'm trying to look at the plan and work off of the numbers that we have here. Yeah, the, again, I'm just, I'm just kind of, I'm doing the best estimate I can off of this drawing, based on the way it, it looks, there's about eight feet from, at that corner of the T, if that makes sense, where the jet ski lift is shown, so, anything over the eight feet, the 10 feet essentially, encroaches by at least two feet closer to the property line, which puts it, puts it at approximately an eight-foot setback on that side. And again, these are-
So it's close?
That's, that's the way these numbers break down, it's, it's, it's close. And again, that's if, you know, it's uptight to the side, or the, the main arm of the dock, if you will, then that 10 feet would appear to encroach at least two feet beyond the edge of the dock.
Okay.
But still within the six feet, but again, it's not exactly what is shown here, either.
All right, let me ask you any more about relating to the ordinances, things like the elevation of this, the weight, you know, the, the things that, other things were raised, how high it raises, is that, any of that regulated in the ordinances?
No, it's not.
It is not? Okay. All right. So let's go back, let's go back now to the applicant here, and let's have a talk about this. Okay, first thing, first thing, one personal watercraft versus two.
Right, now, and Mr. Boardman, for clarification, is it okay if he just keeps one on there, even if it is 10 feet wide, as opposed to storing two actual jet skis on there?
That's what I thought, there was two allowed.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I mean, if I can take that, it's, it-
Yes, please take that.
It's kind of, kind of a catch-22, because, is it allowed technically? Yes, as long as it meets the setbacks, there's nothing that really regulates its size, but I am, I have to admit, I'm a bit concerned about allowing something that's intended for two, on the hopes that they only use it for one. Does that make sense, like, you know?
Yes, it is, and that's typically not the way we do things. You design for the, you design for the use, and that's it.
Understood. So if we were to reduce the width to closer to seven and a half or eight feet, it would alleviate some of your concerns?
You would have to, you, okay, this is what you have to do. Number one, you have to, you have to design this around the allowable ordinance standard of one.
Okay.
Okay, number two, you have to show clear dimensions on the side, which confirm to us that you do not have any side yard restrictions, that you're well within the dimensions of the six-feet standard, which, which are clearly in our ordinance. You have to, you have to definitely, you have, definitely certify that, that maintenance, okay, that, that will be maintained in good stead, okay? And, 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 you know, those are the things that, for this, for the, you know, that, what I'm hearing, okay, and the other commissioners now may have more, because we're going to go around- okay, and the other commissioners now may have more, because we're going to go around the table and talk about this. For this to be considered, this is what's going to have to happen.
Understood.
I'm going to stop now. Ann, with all of this, what are your thoughts and your questions?
Well, at this point, I will delay until the other members have made their comment.
Okay. Mr. Davis, questions and comments and opinions, please.
I think that's pretty good comments, which I, you know, I agree with a lot with what you said. You know, in the past, we've had applicants just show us a snapshot of maybe what one may look like when it's fully constructed, so you can see that there isn't, you know, a problem with the view out into the water, so you can see that, you know, what it would look like when it was done. We've had people do that before, so maybe a picture of what it would look like.
Right, and Mr. Commissioner, I actually had one of those, should have been the last slide up here, also in your handout, of the one that's a few doors north here, right there. It'll be similar to that, but like we said, we anticipated being shorter in height.
I think a lot of the other concerns I had are already covered. You've covered most of them, so that's all I have.
Thank you. Steve, your thoughts and opinions, please.
Thank you. Definitely, you know, echo what I think you'll hear from a lot of people. You've covered a lot of the stuff, so thank you for doing that. I am curious around the construction aspect, you know, hearing the experiences that you've had with this location. Is there anything you'd do different to construct this? Do you go down deeper with some of these pilings? Do you do anything different to ensure that it stays a good structure?
Well, you can't control the act of God. I mean, everything, you drive things down to refusal, and that's pretty much it. So everything's pretty much, it's the same standard for building a dock or a lift or a hoist or whatever. They're all, everything's drove to refusal, then it's cut off to a certain elevation, and you start to build on top of that, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Brian, your thoughts, please.
I was wondering if there was any canopy for the hoist and such that would interfere with site views, for example, within the clear vision triangle?
No, there'll be no overhead canopy or anything like that.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I could chime in, that's technically prohibited as well by ordinance, so just so Commissioner Pollak, they could not do that even if they just decided now they wanted to. That would not be allowed under the ordinance.
All of my other concerns have been answered.
Thank you, Brian. Eric, your thoughts, please.
Yeah, a couple of questions. Number one is that the two jet skis didn't catch my eye or my notice, first of all, because I didn't see them in there. But then, secondly, you are numbered, you are allowed two hoists per 33 feet. So technically, this is actually one hoist or one lifting device, and you're allowed two. And then it says, and I think this may be an issue with our ordinances, it says not more than one boat and one personal watercraft. Doesn't say anything about two personal watercrafts. You've got two, two basically small boats. What's the difference? I'm not saying we have an answer for that. I mean, that just may be a part of our ordinance that needs to be clarified.
Well, yet, what I can go back to is, you know, again, how this has been applied historically, and that is essentially one boat and one watercraft generally being viewed as a jet ski, being the personal watercraft.
Okay, so I mean, I don't see anything from our ordinance that would say you can't build a one-hoist if it's two jet skis, just from a technical standpoint, and maybe I'm wrong on that.
No, I just, just to chime in, I agree with that. That's what I was trying to get at earlier, but it does raise some concern with me that we're allowing something intended for, other than what the ordinance would allow, if that makes sense.
Yeah, going by that, then, if this applicant wanted to put one boat and one jet ski, that would actually be more detrimental to, I think, what the homeowners association is actually implying for. In either case, I think that's, I don't know if we have a clear answer for that at this point in time. And then secondarily, as far as the homeowners association go, I clearly respect the fact that you guys have this association. It's been around since 1906, and it's, you know, I would, I'd liked to have my own house on Hickory Island at some point in time. But that said, this planning commission can't enforce your bylaws. That's something that the state of Michigan or you guys have to do on your own, and I don't think that would be in our purview to enforce it any homeowners association, whether it be Hickory Island or one of the site condos or any of the other regular condos for that matter. So I don't know if that's our, in fact, I'm sure we can't enforce the ordinances, or the bylaws, but we can enforce our ordinances. And based on our ordinance, I don't see any clear reasons not to let this go, other than the fact that there is no clear dimension for the hoist that I think is, either needs to be clarified with a not-to-exceed standpoint, or this applicant needs to come back with a specific drawing.
Thank you, Eric. Ann?
I don't really have anything to add to this, other than what's been said, but I find that the Hickory Island Company has been more than willing to do what they can to meet their requirements. But again, the association, we cannot enforce the association rules, so we have to go by the ordinance, and if it meets all of our ordinance's requirements, then we can't deny. Having said that, I agree with what's been said.
Thank you, Ann. My thoughts on this, I would like to see clarification on this. Before I would support this, I would like to see clarification. I would definitely want to see clear dimensions shown, so that we can confirm that, in fact, we're in compliance with our ordinances. That's number one. Okay? I've heard the subtlety about one dock or one lift or two lifts, okay? If two lifts are there, two lifts are going to be used, it's inevitable, okay? And that is unacceptable to me. I would not support any proposal that way. If you want one jet ski, you get one lift. Now, others may disagree, but if you want my vote, that's what it's going to take. I want a clear statement of maintenance on this, and I'd like to follow up. I think Jim has an excellent point. I'm ignorant about these things, and I was asking what this thing looks like. I'd like to see a picture, okay, of one that's typical, that you can actually look at and say, okay, now I know what this is, simply because I want to be educated as to what's there. Okay? Had this not come up, you know, the idea of two lifts was never even raised, okay? Had we had, you know, had we had a picture, this is what it's going to look like, somebody would have said, gee, there's two there, okay? I don't want any more surprises for myself. Now, you know, others may have different opinions, but in my, to my thinking, I think this application should be tabled pending you submitting revised materials to us that confirm that you meet the requirements of our ordinance. And that's what I think. But again, it's the consensus of what the commission thinks. So those are my thoughts on this.
Can I ask one question?
Absolutely, please.
Just so I can understand the process. So if they develop these documents, does that mean they have to go through this approval process through the, what do you have on here, the MDEQ and the other agencies, because it'll be a new drawing?
Let's ask Brian. How does what I'm talking about relate to Army Corps or DEQ?
I do not envision there's any issue with that whatsoever. We're asking for more refined plans, as long as they are consistent and don't vary from the approved plans. I don't see why that would be an issue. We can always work with the applicant and forward them on, make sure that those entities have these. But again, they've both already approved this hoist. In theory, they've issued a permit for it. It just hasn't been installed yet, so, you know, I don't know that's going to do anything that's going to actually modify the approved plans, but only further clarify for local use. But we'll certainly, we'll raise the question with them, I guess. Let me put it that way. We'll make the contact. We'll make sure that they're aware of it. My guess is it won't be of any issue to them, but we'll still make that effort.
Thank you. More questions, Steve?
No.
Okay. You know, I guess I will say one other thing to the people in the audience, okay? You know, it's building on what Eric has said over here. Our ordinances are written for the island of Goseel, whether it's on the north end, south end, Thirrafair Canal. Our ordinances have to be...
I see you, Chairman.
Sorry?
You're blocking our view.
Oh, okay, yeah. Would you guys stand over? What I'm saying here is our ordinances are written for the entire township of Goseel. They have to be suitable with the north end, on Thirrafair Canal. They have to be suitable everywhere. So on that basis, they're generic, so that, you know, there are some things which are absolutely dimensional and fixed and locked down, okay, and they fit anywhere on this island, okay? You have a specific, unique condition down there, which is much tighter and much different than what our general ordinances for the island are, okay? What we can enforce is exactly what's in our ordinances, okay? What's in your bylaws, if they happen to coincide with what's in our ordinances, then we enforce them. If not, if yours are more strict, then it's your responsibility to enforce those standards within your association, okay? And the township has nothing to do with that. So it may not be what you want to hear, but it is the way it is, and we got a legal opinion that supports that. And this, by the way, has come up a number of times over the years, as I'm sure Mr. Hartwell knows, because you guys have been down here before in years past with similar sorts of issues, looking for township intervention, and you've gotten the same answer every time, okay? You have issues with your bylaws, then it's your issue to deal with them. Okay, so on that note, if there are no other comments, anybody have any other comments? When I would entertain a motion, please, as to how this should proceed.
Can we ask them to come, can they come? Is it possible that they could come back with their revised plans at our next meeting?
Uh, well, let's see. Okay, we do not, there would not be another public hearing on this, okay? This would be, this would be a modification, so our next meeting will likely be, what did we say?
May 2nd.
May 2nd is when our next meeting is going to be, okay? If you were to get your materials in on time, okay, and get these issues addressed, okay, you could be on the agenda. But you have to have them in time for the packages to go out to the commissioners, and there's dates on that. And you have to work with Brian on that to make sure you have it in there. So assuming you want to come back, and I'm assuming you do...
Absolutely.
Okay? Then your next opportunity, assuming we table you, would be to come back on May 2nd with a plan that meets the requirements.
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman. We can do that. And as I indicated earlier, and as Mr. Paquette indicated, he was not the contractor that actually made these drawings and submitted.
That's okay. It, that really doesn't matter. What matters is correct information, clear information coming to the commission.
Right, and he and I...
You provide that, we'll be fine.
You'll have it.
Thank you. Okay, entertain a motion, please, regarding this application.
Moving to table this application pending clarification per tonight's guidance.
Okay, we have a motion from Eric to table with those conditions. We have support for Ann. Is there discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Brian.
I was wondering what should, if there's itemized lists that we should have, that should be reflected within the site plan, maybe specifically saying that there will be no lighting, there will be no dredging, et cetera?
So that way, lead them off, and we'll make it a friendly amendment.
Okay. You know, subject to the site plan showing that there will be no lighting, no dredging, clear dimensions of setbacks, clearly showing that there's only one personal watercraft and a picture of a typical device.
And that maintenance will be insured.
Correct.
Okay, do we get it all? Anybody have anything else? Is that all right, Eric?
Yeah.
Ann? Good. Thank you for the bill. Okay, we have an extended motion now. Additional discussion. Call a question.
The only additional discussion I think we should have is, I think we need to clarify in our ordinance whether that's two personal watercraft or one boat and one watercraft.
I think we should add it to our list, don't you?
Good point. Because if it's up, it's a question now, it's going to be a question in the future.
Yes, it will.
You're right. And is it the intent, or is it the specifics that we're looking at right here?
Additional discussion. Call a question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, sir, so you, you're clear on now what you have to do?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we are.
Okay. Any questions? You see, you talked to Mr. Borden there.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Let's move on. The next item is, I'm sorry. Next item we have is an update on the zoning ordinance amendments, and this is a report from the subcommittee. So specifically, a little background on this, the planning commission manages our township ordinances, and our intent is always to make sure that these are current and proper so that they best protect citizens when there's new developments that come online. So in 2010, we had some brainstorming sessions, and out of that came a number of potential improvements that we thought about for the zoning ordinance, and a subcommittee was put together. Jay and Jim Davis are on that subcommittee now. We did have a third member, however, he is no longer on the commission. And they've been working with Brian Borden on this and have actually, at the last meeting, brought forward a number of potential changes for discussion, okay? At that point, we didn't have a really good chance to talk about it because it was too late in the evening. So what we did was instead was say, okay, let's bring it back tonight, and let's bring back a small subset of these, basically changes to Article 1 definitions, Article 7, McComb Street District, Article 9, Airport and Light Industrial District, Article 17, waterfront provisions, and Article 18, non-conforming lots, structures in use. This all sounds like a lot, but in fact, it isn't. In fact, the changes that are being discussed around here are really quite minor. They're subtleties, okay, that we felt we needed to have in the ordinances to make sure that we had things covered. So there isn't anything radical in any of this. This is, so, you know, as we talk through it, you know, keep that in mind. This purpose as an agenda item is to discuss this further, to see if there's any more input that the planning commission has on these specific items, and to get the direction from the commission to say whether you want to roll these forward at the next meeting or the meeting after as a formal ordinance change, okay? So there's no vote on this tonight. It's basically consensus thinking and input from all the commissioners on these five ordinance changes. So if everybody's clear on that, I'll stop. And Brian, if you would kind of start at the beginning, and as we talk about one, let's, when you cover the basics of it, let's see if there's any input or any concerns, and then we move to the next one.
Absolutely. Yeah, a great overview, too. It's just a reminder to the commission of, you know, where this started was, I think I said this last time we talked about, it keeps getting shorter and shorter. The subcommittee's goal was to really put this in more manageable pieces for the commission to wrap their minds around. You know, originally, our draft was upwards of 60, 70-some pages, and now we've got it down, albeit it's still about 15, 16 pages, but far more manageable for us to take on at this time. And then, let's get these out of the way. We can move on to the next set when the time is right. So with that, I'm just going to go ahead and start. If you've got the packets in front of you, I'm just going to go through each of the bullet points, and we'll just kind of walk through the ordinance. I think it's pretty straightforward, but again, I've been working on this for quite a while now, so if it's, if it's not, please stop me. The very first element, and this goes back to a conversation we had probably a year, year and a half ago, that related to uses that are not listed in your ordinance, and two of them that came up were pawn shops and resale and/or consignment shops. So these are two items which we have added. The first step to adding any use to your ordinance is to first define it, unless it fits some other category. These do not necessarily fit an existing retail-type definition, so Section 1, which would amend Section 1.3 of the actual zoning ordinance, is simply to add a definition for one, a pawn shop, and then two, a resale and consignment shop. I think these, again, I think they're pretty straightforward. The key being that, you know, a pawn shop is the loaning of money for goods. A resale shop is the selling of otherwise purchased goods, or a consignment shop where there's an arrangement between an owner of a store, a person with a product, and then they will sell the product, and then the person would get a cut of whatever it sells for, whatever their arrangement is in advance. So those are essentially the two definitions that we've come up with, and I'm going to stop at that before I go to the next section.
Questions on that?
I have one question.
I have one question.
Here, microphone.
Oh, yeah. The resale and consignment shop makes me think of things that they might be used clothing or things of this type. What about the retail? How does that fit into the? Retail, we always think of everything new.
Mm-hmm.
And we have a shop on the island that does that. So, do we have it, we don't have retail presently, do we?
Yeah, of course. I mean, Macomb Street allows general commercial uses.
Yeah, okay.
So, yeah, the general retail is already addressed. We felt that these were kind of additional components that we wanted to clarify. In the event the question came up, well, is a resale shop, does that meet your general commercial definition currently? Well, you could probably make a case that it does. I think, you know, the idea was that we wanted to put in something specific for that use, such that there was, you know, really never a question in the future whether it was allowed, and/or what they could do. So, by definition, we're establishing what that use is.
Right. And we do know that even what we call, used to call retail, does have some consignment. Thank you.
Okay, Section 2, please.
Thank you. Section 2, again, rather straightforward, but what we've done is, now we've established the definitions for these two uses, now we have to add them in the appropriate locations. These are both commercial-type uses, so we've added them to the Macomb Street District, which is our main commercial corridor. The, as is pretty typical, and I think the Subcommittee was on board with, the resale consignment shops were added as uses that are permitted by right, again, pretty well in keeping with the intent of the district, the other types of principal permitted uses. Meanwhile, pawn shop kind of brings in some added distinction to it. It's a little bit different type of a shop. It can attract a little bit different opportunity for someone in terms of a business. They are generally listed as special land uses. They are sometimes viewed as, you know, a little bit, trying to think of the proper phrasing here. I want to be nice to pawn shops. I don't have an issue with pawn shops, but at the end of the day, there's a bit of a stigma, maybe, that can be attached to them. It can be concerning to nearby property owners or surrounding business owners. And so, they're generally placed as special land uses to ensure that if they're going to open and be allowed, that they are sighted appropriately, and they're going to operate appropriately, such that they will be in keeping with this, you know, the specific intent of your commercial corridor. With that, we really took it a step further this time as well. And what we did is add in a few specific regulations or specific use requirements that if someone did come forward with a pawn shop request, again, if this is all approved, somebody came before you with a special land use application for a pawn shop, they would be further restricted by these specific requirements. The first of which is prohibition on outdoor display, which we could probably make the case that that's stated elsewhere, but figure it's clearer and cleaner to just put it right here with the pawn shop regs. The second is a limitation on hours of operation. And again, that gets back to kind of this stigma of some concerns that these types of uses sometimes generate. For our purposes here, and after discussion with the Subcommittee, we came up with a 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM limitation on their hours of operation. And then, the last one is, because of the way in which these uses typically operate, there is oftentimes, there's additional security that is provided. And I think generally, at least, what I envision, and I've had this issue come up in other communities, is thinking of things like putting bars in the windows, you know, trying to really protect their use. And the intent behind Sub- or Sub-Par-FC here is that we don't want to see that. That's not what Macomb Street is about. I don't want to see a building, a nice new building go up and have, you know, first-floor windows that are loaded with iron bars across it as a security measure. So, that's really what the intent of C is, is that we don't want to see that. If they need added security, they can get an alarm system, they can do something else. But we don't want them to be visible or detract from the building itself.
Questions about that? Comments about that? Okay, let's move on.
The next one that was added was a, another use that we added, and I believe this was again, a special land use, staying in Macomb Street District. And that is this, the idea of household tool and equipment rental. We did have a little bit of difficulty at the Subcommittee level, trying to really put our finger on what we were trying to get at. This is an updated description of that, where I tried to really get at, like, the hardware uses we have on Macomb, and some of the, some of the tool and equipment rental that they have. We're not talking about big trucks, we're not talking about dump trucks, we're not talking about earth-moving equipment. You know, I'm thinking of much smaller items, hence, you know, kind of this phrasing of household tool and equipment rental, something you might use for your yard. I don't know that a tiller is the best example, but, you know, something that would be yard maintenance equipment that you could rent from a hardware store and then use at your property, not necessarily a dump truck that you might need to clear out your backyard. And that's why specifically, we've excluded vehicles, trailers, construction equipment, and machinery. So, the idea is keeping it small in that type of a scale. I'm not sure if I got my point across as clearly as I wanted to on this one, but, you know, if you are in agreement in terms of, if what I've written here makes sense to you, then I think we've at least gone a step in the right direction.
Comments on that piece? Steve?
So, I'm just trying to clarify. So, this is saying that if you're in this business for household tool and equipment rental, you want them to have it in a screened-in area in the rear yard?
Yes, if it were, if there were outdoor storage. Don't necessarily have to be outdoor storage. You could have the equipment indoors as well.
So, I guess I'm thinking about, you know, typically, they put these things in the front yard to advertise during the day we have these tools in. The hardware store puts it out in the front yard to say we have these tools in. Are we now saying you can't advertise these are available during hours of operation? And I think that kind of defeats the purpose they're in. If they can't show the public these are available, stop by, pick up your rototiller now, it's here, or stop by and buy your new John Deere tractor, it's at the hardware store.
Yeah, in all honesty, I'm probably going to deflect that back to the commission. You know, if that's something that, you know, that you guys are open to, we could certainly, you know, rethink that. It could almost be, you know, we could have a temporary duration. I think both the, there's the, I hate to name the names, but they're the two essentially hardware-type stores on Macomb Street. And I think they both do that, if I'm not mistaken. I think they both put lawn mowers and snow blowers out in front. I think we were probably trying to get away from that, but if the commission doesn't have an issue with it, you know, we could certainly, I suppose what I could do is rewrite this such that, you know, during hours of operation, they could be stored, you know, outside, within, you know, five feet of the building, something to that effect. I think I, I just want to put a little further refinement to it if we're going to open that up.
I don't have any problem with displaying the equipment. I think it's the continued storage that's the problem, right?
So, I think there's a distinction there between display and storage. So, let me, I could almost even just add a closing sentence that would state, you know, "display during business hours." Outdoor display during business hours permitted, something to that effect, I guess. I'm just trying to be cautious. I know the question came up before, in our Subcommittee meeting, we talked about how we handled the prior, the most recent hardware use that went in on the north side there. And I, I got to be honest, I don't recall that we specifically allowed outdoor display.
I think we just said there's no outdoor storage. We said anything about display.
I have one more question. The, what is the idea around the screened enclosure? Why, why would we create that, that additional burden to have being a screened-in enclosure?
I think two reasons. One is security for their own business, and two is visually, we don't want to just stare at a, typically, you don't want to just stare at an open storage yard. They can, they can get, become cluttered. They certainly, maybe are not always as attractive as we would like. And, you know, to me, I understand where you're going with that. I think on Macomb Street, though, we generally, I don't know how much tolerance we want to have for something like that on Macomb Street, given what the intent of the district is and what the overall vision is for that district in particular.
Yeah, I wanted to add that, again, with the intent of the district, that's supposed to be a pedestrian environment, more retail-oriented. So, there is the, you know, possibility, you know, that's open for abuse. You know, if somebody could say that they're displaying something, or displaying numerous, you know, pieces of equipment out in the area, that if a person's riding their bike or along the area, they might fall into it. So, you know, you have to be cognizant of pedestrian walkways, as well as the sort of fall zone within that area. And I understand the need to display, but there's other different, there's different ways to advertise. You could have just, you know, you'll limit the number of equipment that's out there in the front, so you have one or two select pieces of machinery that maybe they're in high demand, and so, you know, you want to advertise that that's there. Or possibly, we could look into, you know, you do sandwich boards or some sort of other advertising medium to let people know that this equipment is available. So, you know, while I understand the concerns, I think that within this specific area, since it's supposed to be our, you know, pedestrian and bicycle-oriented zone, you know, that there should be these, you know, additional restrictions compared to if they were in another part of the township.
Brian, can you find a balance from what you've heard?
Yeah, let me, let me just, I'm not going to give you the exact language.
Doesn't have to be now, but I mean-
Yeah, yeah.
This is feedback that'll come back at the next, at the next review.
Yeah, well, let me just throw out just what I'm thinking, just to make sure I'm not completely out of my mind at this point in the night. One would be, you know, allowing a duration of display while they're open, while the business is operating. They would have to be placed back inside at night, or within a screened storage yard in the rear. And I think, too, I think what I would want to do is have a, basically, an indication or a requirement that they, you know, they can't be more than three feet, four feet, five feet from the building, something to that effect, such that we don't have them. I don't want them just scattered around the front yard. I think that the two businesses that do it currently, I've never heard any complaints. I think they do it rather tastefully, if that makes sense to y'all. If outdoor display and storage can be done tastefully, I think they do a good job with it. They don't clutter it up too much, they don't junk up the front of their building, and they're certainly not impacting their front yards, or, as Commissioner Pollock noted, certainly don't want anything that's going to be near a sidewalk where we're going to have an issue with that.
There's one other thing to think about, is that before Macomb Street was paved, they had drainage things in some cases, and in other cases, they could park in front of the buildings. After the sidewalks went in, then you run into, and the hardware store is a good example of that, before the paving, he came in for a modification of the building, and he said, "You got to provide for parking in the rear, because one of these days, you're not going to have this front parking." Well, he didn't like that much, but he put up the sign, and then along come paving, and there's no parking in front of anything. And remember, this is an old community, everything is not going to match up. And by using, letting them allow, for example, putting out a couple of mowers or a pool barrel or something, they take them in at night. The sandwich boards, I've seen sitting there days on end. So, there's moderation that you have to think about. And if you can keep them from junking the place up, that's our best effort. And it's the only business district we've ever had. We're dead-end. There's either, I live on the island and buy on the island, nobody's going to drive over here to get anything. So, you kind of have to keep an open mind on some things. And I agree with you, we don't want it junked up.
Thank you, Anne. Okay, let's move on.
Before we move on, just really briefly, I think that since we're impacting the Commerce area and also the Commerce Park, I think that we should make sure that the Commerce Park Commission and then also the DDA are able to see and comment on these proposed changes.
I think, what I would, I guess what I would suggest is, let's, once we get through this tonight, let's see where we're headed, and if you want to see another refined draft, because I think I've got a change coming to that one. Let's continue, let's see how that goes, and we'll forward copies on as well. I know I have had, haven't had any conversation on the DDA end, but I have had some conversations with Derek in terms of the Commerce Park end. We talked about a couple of drafts prior, so I've been in communication with him, and I will certainly follow up with him as well.
And that's, that's a good thought, is that when we do these things, we should have the DDA in mind, or some of the changes that we're even proposing.
Yeah, and let's not forget, too, that Jay is on the Subcommittee and Jay is also on the DDA as well. So, we have, we have a pretty good in there as well.
Right.
All right, Mr. Chairman, let me, let me continue. I'm sorry, I'm slowing the pace here a little bit.
Oh, you're doing it. Yeah, thank you.
As we move on, Section 3 of the, of the proposed amendments affects the Airport District. And what we've done is we've identified, again, some additional uses for this particular district. We've added in a, kind of an expanded version of what we just talked about, which would be tool and equipment rental. Now, this, the intent being that we're at the Airport District, we're no longer on Macomb Street, mind you, we're at Commerce Park. So, the intent here is that we would allow larger vehicles, trailers, equipment-type things, not, not just displaying a couple of snow blowers. I think here, we're talking about some bigger equipment. Again, however, with a requirement as it relates to outdoor storage, which is similar to how we would handle other outdoor storage in Commerce Park. It would be permitted by right without the outdoor storage. If there is outdoor storage, it becomes a special land use with screening requirements. That's the first one. The other, I don't want to miss any here. Jumping ahead, another, a special land use that we've added, this one's gone through a number, this is probably the fourth or fifth version of the recycling center. This is one Jeff initially wrote, and there were about 17 different requirements, and I'm not sure any of us understood half of them. So, this, this one's gone through a lot of different review, and certainly some change. I think the predominant change of which that's the most important for our consideration is that what we're looking for would be a municipal recycling center. That was one thing that the Subcommittee, we really hit home, I think, when we talked about this, was we don't want to just see a haphazard, fly-by-night, you know, scrap metal recycle center pop up in our Commerce Park. This way, the ones I'm familiar with, too, that have operated well, I believe, was it Taylor, I think, is the model that we discussed? I think Taylor has something, which was what we were envisioning when this was initially drafted. So, the idea that it would be a municipal center, run, owned, operated, and then essentially spelling out each of the different conditions. You all have probably seen this before in your prior drafts. I don't know how much time I want to spend on each of these, but, you know, basically, some provision as to what could and would be accepted in terms of non-food items. We're talking about, you know, non-food, non-hazardous materials, those types of things. Another important one is to be conducted completely within an enclosed building. So, we're not just talking about, you know, a dumpster for steel, a dumpster for aluminum, a dumpster for something else. We're talking about within a structure. So, this is not just a big, open-air type of use. Landscape screening requirements centrally around the building in terms of what our other buffer zone requirements would be. And I, a requirement for concrete paving for areas that are going to be used by heavier trucks, obviously, the stuff's going to have to get, if we ever had one of these, the materials have to get out, too, with an understanding that that would probably require some pretty heavy lifting and some pretty heavy-duty trucks. So, we want to make sure that, that those maneuvering areas are going to be concrete as opposed to asphalt and get chipped up and break up more quickly. And then, the last is simply, you know, parking, provision of parking and stacking spaces, essentially ensuring free and clear movement of vehicles into and out of the site, which we would probably look at that anyway as part of a site plan review, we'd look at vehicular circulation. But I think this just tries to further hit home, that we want to make sure we're not running into any problems, having backups that would go out onto Grow Row or anything to that effect.
Questions or comments on that element? Brian?
Since I'm new to the commission, I apologize if I'm, you know, bringing up some issues that I've been brought up before. But I was just wondering if we entertain the notion of any lawn compost, just specifically for, you know, that was from the township residents? Just for the reason, if people are starting to do organic gardening, or doing organic lawn care and such, trying to decrease the amount of fertilizer and, you know, make sure that our waterways are in a little bit better order, it'd be nice to have, you know, a municipal facility where you could-
better order, it'd be nice to have, you know, a municipal facility where you could come and get compost that was done locally rather than traveling out farther. So I just didn't know if that was entertained at all or if, you know, if it was inside of a building, if that's even possible, you know, through performance standards, if that could be something that, you know, we'd look into.
Yes, actually, I'm sure it was. Brian, you want to summarize?
Well, the short answer is yes, it was considered. It was part of a couple of prior drafts and the subcommittee, as we got through it more and more and more, we weren't sure that it was something that we thought we wanted to pursue at, at this time in particular. It could certainly be revisited again, whether as part of this now, this review or at a later date. I think one of the things was, we, we were trying to, we were trying to have this, what we, what we narrowed this batch of amendments down to, we were trying to, to sort of set it up so that they were, I hate to use the phrase, but kind of no brainers that, you know, as John mentioned at the outset, you know, we were looking at relatively minor changes to the ordinance and I, and I, subcommittee don't let me put words in your mouth, but I, I think the composting kind of took a step over that and, and we weren't really sure we wanted to pursue that right now at this moment.
Jim, you want to comment on that?
I think we had commented too about just overall odor. I think if you do the, the composting, a couple of us had just concerns, if you lived in the general vicinity of a compost pile that you would, from our experiences, would have an odor, so.
Yeah, that coupled with the fact that in the Commerce Park, there are things which are allowed, which are like nursing homes, senior housing. And we didn't feel there was proper segregation. We didn't know enough about it and like, like what was said, it was too complicated to tackle, so we left it alone.
Great, thank you for the update.
Okay, let's move on to section four.
All right, Mr. Jay, we're having trouble with the floors, too.
Hey, hey, technical problem.
Yeah, I'm going to tag another, I'll leave out the last five minutes there. We got to think the last, the last item of this, there are two. The first of which, these are both under the paragraph D, uses not permitted, and this is a current laundry list of things that are not permitted in the, in the A1 district. The first thing we did was expand upon the, basically accepting out the recycling center within an enclosed building, which we just added as a special land use. We wanted to make sure that that was, there was no confusion, that that was a prohibited use under paragraph eight, along with those other uses. And then the last one that we added in is essentially prohibiting uses with the potential to attract wildlife or birds that could become hazardous to airport operations. Which I think is pretty straightforward, but, you know, again, I've been working on this for a long time. I've, I've seen it so many times, I apologize.
That's okay, let's move on.
Okay, the, we're down to the final two here. The next section is really just, it's a, a reference point for people using the ordinance. Article 17, as we discussed earlier this evening, contains our waterfront provisions. One of the things that comes up a lot are the idea of this section addressing waterfront structures, but not necessarily dealing with, say, an accessory structure other than a waterfront, i.e. a shed, detached garage, et cetera. So what we've done is we've put in a reference, or the intent here is to put in a reference such that somebody will know to look, even if they're in the waterfront yard, they know to then look at article 19 for other types of accessory structures because we have specific provisions even for waterfront properties. So again, it's just, hopefully it's a guide that helps get people in the right direction as opposed to saying, "Well, here's waterfront provisions, I didn't see anything about it," when in fact, they just didn't take a look at the right section. There's no questions on that one. The, the last one is another, this is just really a clarification. What you have right now in your ordinance are, are provisions under which a non-conforming building may be expanded without petitioning the zoning board of appeals for a variance. And we have basically a test that we conduct to determine whether or not that can occur. It's a, a, a three-prong test. It has to do with a limitation that only one side of a building can be non-conforming. So for instance, if you have two non-conforming side yards, you fail the test, you got to go to ZBA if you want to expand. The second, having to do with this, the non-conforming setback that you have, has to be at least 90% of the required setback. My math is not strong, but if it's a six-foot requirement, you have to have essentially a five-foot, what, four, well, let's go with the easy way, 5.4 foot setback to qualify under that standard. That standard is, is where we have incorporated the change. The 90% rule is specifically written to setbacks. What we've had to do is basically make an interpretation in select instances whereby the setback was okay, but try to remember you also have a building separation requirement. We have 18-foot minimum between principal buildings. And what we found in the past is that somebody wanted to do an addition, they met the setback, but they didn't meet, they were non-conforming in building separation, not in setback. So we basically applied this as though it was intended to also apply to the building separation. It's only come up a handful of times and I think in most instances, it worked or it was going to ZBA anyway. So it wasn't anything where we, we made some crazy interpretation and, and had to apply it all over the place. But what I really wanted to do was put it in writing such that it's clear now that if you meet that 90% standard for either setback or building separation, that that would be a qualifying condition to expand the non-conforming building.
Questions or comments on that? Okay. Brian, that's quite an excellent summary you gave. Very, very good job for such a, such a complex set of ordinance changes. I guess at this point, I'd like to bring it back to the commission and get a sense as to what, what the next steps are, okay? And there are basically, I suppose, are two. One, you could bring it back again as a draft to us, or we can move it ahead to a public hearing and then, and then see what, what proceeds at that point. Those would be the two choices. Jim, from the subcommittee perspective, what would you like to see happen?
I wouldn't mind, you know, option number two. I think everyone made comments tonight, I'm assuming everyone made their comments tonight and that Brian would be able to work them in and we'd have a public hearing, but I'd love to hear from the group at this point in time.
Okay, well, let's go this way. Steve?
The only concern I had, I'd raised earlier, and that's, you know, we got to be sensitive to the marketing that the businesses have to do. So I think they've done it very tastefully and, and I think that needs to continue. We don't want to put a hindrance on that. So I think however you work the language in there, I think that can be clear where, where they can do marketing.
Recognize when, when he modifies the language and we bring it to a public hearing, you know, at that point in time, you know, we can make further changes if, if what comes back is not suitable to everybody. So this is not the last time you see it, it'll be another time. So are you okay to move ahead?
Completely support it. I think this work is tremendous, so thank you to the subcommittee and Brian and everybody else.
Okay. Sir?
I think most of my comments have already been answered, so, you know, I'm pretty comfortable with it.
Ready to go?
You're ready to go.
Good. Eric?
Yeah, I'm ready to go. I just would like to see that once it's in its final draft form, then it gets over to the DDA and to the airport Commerce Park Commission.
I'm sure Brian can make that happen. Ann?
Well, I'm ready for us to go to the public hearing if this, because there's a lot of work done, it's pretty clean, and it would just be somebody picking up something we haven't done.
Yeah, I, I, I support this completely. I think you guys have done a really good job, so. Okay, on that note then, okay, we won't, we won't try to do this for the May 2 meeting, but I would suggest for the meeting after, whenever that might be, in June or July or whatever, this, this would come back.
Right.
And that'll give you time to process it a little bit, get the DA input and then have the public notice.
Absolutely.
So if everybody's okay with that, then we'll finish off this item here and it is now 10:00 after. I'd suggest we take a five-minute recess and then come back and finish up the agenda.
Wait, no, you said a break?
A five-minute break?
The, the final four, I mean, the final basketball.
Oh, okay.
Somebody just get through it.
All right, so, all right.
You have money on the game.
Oh, money on the line.
We got to get it.
Oh, my gosh. Guys, we are now on the clock. We better get going here, all right. On that note, if anybody needs to step out, go ahead and we'll, we'll come back to it. Okay, we're going to move to the next item, which is update on road ends. Okay, a little background on this. At the last meeting, we had an extended discussion concerning road ends. And road ends is a question that we were talking about, were the ones that like go to the water, okay, around the island, and there are 40 or so of these. But in any case, these are all primarily by Wayne County, but, but not exclusively so. Over the years, Wayne County has, has been, has deeded some of these off to either citizens who have a property that's adjacent to them or to the township, okay? And this has kind of really happened in a haphazard manner and, and because the transferring process from Wayne County isn't, is not well-executed by Wayne County.
No.
And, and the result is, is that the township doesn't really have the right input and the right management, you know, of this to make sure that property that needs to be in township hands, you know, in fact can get into township hands, okay? Because Wayne County is disorganized. And so we had a talk about this and.
Now, Steve, yeah, Steve was our primary secretary and kind of collected all the thoughts on the email from everybody.
Yep, and, and we will, we will certainly be getting into this in, in one second. Okay, what, what we, what we did was we formed a subcommittee, okay? And that was Jody and, and Steve and, Jody Wise-Couton and Steve and Jay and.
Nisa.
And, yes, and Ann. And they worked this issue, okay? And what they came back with was a series of, of options for the planning commission, okay? And the idea here is, is what process, what they're addressing is what is the process that the township ought to follow to make sure that this is properly managed? And they gave us three options, of which one option had two subsets, or, yeah, two of, two subsets. And so what we want to do tonight is, is talk about this and, and see what the consensus is because I think, I think at the last meeting, you know, we, we all felt a sense of urgency on this, but we lacked information. Well, now we've got some options. We need to talk about it, we need to make, so that, so we make a recommendation to the township board, okay? And then the board, board can enact on it, you know, because, you know, again, all we would be doing on this is recommending. So, so tonight, what we're doing is we're, we're going to talk about these options with the goal of discussing each and then seeing if we can reach a consensus as to what recommendation we make to the board, okay? And then, and then with that needs to be, I think, a recommendation also about, you know, if there's any implementation, you know, do we, you know, it isn't automatic that, for example, the township, that the planning commission, do we be, be the people best suited to evaluate property. They may participate in it, in it, but, you know, there are others that have to be involved, okay? And so how do we, how do we make sure that, that if evaluation is the outcome, that, that the right groups within the community are represented? So, you know, we, so in addition to an option, I think we have to talk about that as well, depending on what option we choose. So again, we'd like, you know, if we can, if we can decide on this, that would be great because, you know, if we could pass this on to the board, I think we would be doing the community a good service. So on this point, I'll stop. Now, okay, Jody was the chair of the commission, she's not here. Steve, you drafted, you drafted.
He drafted the first.
The basic document access?
Yes, I put that together, circulated amongst the group and we had a chance to fine tune it and that is what you see here tonight. It's the consensus of everybody and our thoughts on paper and this draft, or this document, I should say, for your review.
Okay, now, okay, so Brian, you were in on this too?
Yes.
Okay. I would, I would like to go ahead and have you summarize the various options for the commission. Is that all right with you, Steve? Or is it something you would rather?
No, I, no, I got no issue with that. Mine was a 30-minute PowerPoint presentation and that will interfere with tip-off of basketball.
Oh, the pressure's on, guys.
The pressure's on Brian, not me.
Well, I'll tell you what, guys, let's talk about this, okay? We are, we are going to have another meeting on May the 2nd, okay? And I was going to cover this on the chair's report, but we had a concept, a concept review meeting with, with three board members, Eric and Pam Frucci and Peter Krantz here earlier today. There's discussion about, about bringing forward a kayak canoe launching station or area along the Thoroughfare Canal. And, and they wanted an application, a pre-application review with the officers, Ann and Eric and I, were there representing and Commission GA couldn't make it, but they want to move ahead quickly, okay? And, and by their timeline to have it in place this summer, okay, we agreed that we would, we would hold, they would be ready for the May 2 date, okay, which is like, I don't know, three weeks, give or take, and, and we'll, we'll meet again. And so, you know, tonight is rather special, I have to, I have to grant you that. Ann's got one foot out the door. So, would, would we want to table this for, for, for three weeks and come back at it?
What I can say about that, John, is the, the board did not take action.
Here's another.
The board took action on?
The board took action just on the, the immediate policy adoption of saying, "Hey, send a letter to Wayne County, we want first right of refusal."
You didn't do that.
So that's already in the offering.
Yeah, that's.
So that gives us time now to, you know, to make sure we get this done right. So we're not, we still want to get this done sooner than later, but it's not going to be the end of the world if we don't get it done tonight.
Okay, well, then let me throw out one more concern. Could we ask, could we ask, if we want to not do something for three weeks, could we ask Dale to make personal contact with, with his counterpart at Wayne County and make sure there's nothing in the hopper? In spite of our letters and all that from the board, have some face-to-face or phone call to phone call to the right person at Wayne County to know there's nothing in the hopper? And with that and with, and with the letter, we will be covered for three weeks. What do you think? Ann?
Well, my, my personal opinion is that we're sort of trying to do something and we don't have a really strong feeling of somebody that knows what's going on at Wayne County. And the person I'm thinking about is the manager, whether we can come up with this and after we check with the county, see what's going on, that we not say now, as near as you can tell, where, where are, what do we want to do? Now, based on, on the thing that we talked about today that's, that's coming up in May is a good example of somebody knowing what's going on. And I, I just, I just feel like it's way back there someplace. I really do.
Yeah.
And, and I don't, I don't know how you bring that all forward, except for the one person that I know what's going on on the township, with Eric and what's going on.
Well, yeah, anytime you're dealing with Wayne County and trying to be certain you understand what's going on, that's, that's a challenge.
I know what's going on.
Okay.
So maybe our committee should, should try to, to get some basic information, or try to get some basic information and have another meeting with this all written up.
It's expected right now that there is something in the offering and that's Parkway.
Yeah, right.
The end of Parkway. And that's what was discussed at the board meeting and why we adopted something so quickly, just basically a policy saying that, yeah, you know, Wayne County, we want first right of refusal. So it at least gives us the option to, to have that first right. And we, we based a, a set of criteria on guidelines as far as, you know, what would, what we would evaluate at a board level and why we would, would either would or would not want a certain piece of property. So that's in place right now at the board level. So that has us covered until we get this specific policy drafted for the board.
So from the board perspective, we are covered for the time being?
For the time being.
Okay.
So we have said no to Wayne County abandoning Parkway, is that what you're telling us?
No, 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 that, that official has not come through. We were expecting at some point Wayne County's going to come through and say, "What do you want with, you know, do you want Parkway?" And right now, what we have in place is saying, no matter what road end it is, we want you to come to us first.
And is there a timeline we need to respond by? I can't remember what there was, what language it was.
Yeah, there was a, there was a timeline, like a 30-day or something like that. Because Wayne County right now is on a 45-day and we said we want it longer than the 45 days that they're on.
So that'll come to the township and the township manager will just write or the supervisor?
No, no, that's the thing is now it has to go to the township board because it's an official policy, so it can't just go behind the scenes. So it has to go to a public meeting and, you know, whether we want it or not has to be discussed for the public meeting. So that policy is set in place right now, which is a good thing, and it's got the set of, the guidelines that we've already established.
Right, right.
So if we want to further refine that, then we're certainly welcome to do that.
Okay.
But we're, we're at least covered for the interim.
All right, so let's see, you, you, okay. All right, so let's see, you, okay. Steve, you had a real, you know, you had a point you made at the last meeting. Are you comfortable with this, if we delay this for a couple of weeks, three weeks?
You know, I guess I'm comfortable if we delay it, but I would hope if there's some immediate feedback on that document, people could give it to us so if the subcommittee needs to meet between now and the next meeting, that we could at least meet because otherwise that will just drag it on further and just keeps the door open for miscommunication between Wayne County and the township. And then maybe there is additional road ends beyond this one because I think I'm up to speed on some of the concerns on why Wayne County's trying to relieve themselves of this road end and --
Well, what I would like to see from the committee is actually a recommendation. You gave us, you gave us these options. I would like you guys to actually sort it out and come back, come back with the three, of course, but the one that you prefer and why, okay? You did a great job of benefits and concerns on each one of these, but, you know, as a subcommittee, thrash it around. Now, I have my opinion, okay, but that may not be the opinion of the committee. I'd like you guys to come forward and make a case for what it is you want to see.
Whether they like it or not.
Okay, now, then, and make a proposal to the commission. Then you've got, okay, you've had four members on there, you've got to sell five other people, okay? So that would be, that would be, I think, a better thing, a better thing for us to process if you're coming in with a position that you've taken. Eric, you agree?
Yeah, especially since we're covered at this point in time.
Okay. So Ann, you're okay with that approach?
Yeah.
Jim?
Yes.
Brian?
Yeah, if we're covered, it's been fine.
Okay. Steve?
Yes, definitely.
Okay. All right, then on that note, you guys, you guys get your committee together again and thrash it around a little bit more, and, you know, if we can get this on the agenda, if you have time to meet between now and May the 2nd, we would like to process this again at that date. Fair enough?
I would definitely count on us. We'll have it --
Okay. It's on the agenda. Consider it. Consider it done. Okay. Ann hasn't yet, so it'll be a short chair's report. I did tell you about the kayak and the launch. It was a productive meeting. It's a very interesting proposal. I think it has a lot of opportunities. It's going to be coming in as a, essentially a park-type concept, although it's for launching kayaks. Essentially, there'll be a little parking area adjacent to McComb Street, near Lowry Drive, and a kind of a little trail while wandering back to a Thoroughfare Canal, and then an area there to actually stick the boat in the water or the canoe in the water. Very passive use with non-motorized-type vehicles. All the things are going to be addressed, as you would expect, trash collection, loitering, you know, all the things that we deal with on a regular basis will be part of the plan. You know, we'll have proper legal opinions on various things, questions that were raised, as well as, you know, any necessary feedback on permits, on wetlands, Army Corps, DEQ. The township has got this all in the works, okay? And what they're, they'll be asking us to do is to be talked about at the board level again on Monday.
Yeah.
Okay? And then it will come to us on May the 2nd, okay, to review under site plan review, okay? And it'll be a one-shot deal. We'll get all the public input and everything and then decide what to do. So that's coming. Steve?
This concept review meeting, I think it's great that, I guess, it took place. Was this notification, was there given that this meeting was taking place, and how were the members of this team discussed or appointed?
This is, the concept review is, the rules for this are outlined under site plan review, Article 21, and it's, the purposes of concept review are to help applicants, okay? And the parties that participate from the commission are the three officers, Ann, in this case, Jay and me. Now, Jay couldn't make it, so the three officers are representing the commission at this. It is below the level of a quorum, so consequently, it does not, it's not an Open Meetings Act-type issue. It is a working session to help the applicant to know what the planning commission rules are, what the ordinances that apply, what the processes are, what the timing is, so that when they come up in front of us and present, okay, they know the basic, they know the basics and have a better chance of presenting what it is that we need to see in order to be, for us to be able to make an expeditious decision. So it's an Article 21, and that's something we've had for, I don't know, 15, 20 years.
It was added because there was a plethora of applicants that were coming and wasting their time because they didn't have the right level of detail for us to pass it, and they'd have to go back to their engineers and then redo some level of detail. So it's by no means an approval. No one even gives their, really, their feeling on whether they're going to pass it or not. It's really meant to go through each of the different ordinances to help the applicant understand what they're going to need to do in order to be successful, you know, the first or second time through the planning commission.
Okay. Any other questions on that? Okay, last item, minor item, but from a time perspective. Eric and I have been, have been working on issues surrounding money, okay, and fees that township pays for planning services. And we have used LSL a lot in the last year for ordinance changes and this sort of thing, okay, which are costs which are above and beyond the base cost that the township pays, okay? In order to make sure that we properly manage money as we move forward, we're going to, as we define work that needs to be done, okay, we have an idea. We want, we're thinking about this, okay, for an ordinance change. What we will get from Brian is a not-to-exceed cost. It will come back to the township, be weighed against the budget, okay, and it will come back to this commission and you, and we will do a cost-benefit analysis, okay, and we'll reach agreement. Is this worth, is this what we want to do for the community? If the answer is yes, then we proceed and we do the work. If the answer is no, we table it, okay? We wait until a time when funds might be available, okay? So this is going to become a part of our ordinance process. Now, the stuff that's going on right now is already 90% done. We're not holding up anything whatsoever on this road ends, nor are we holding up anything in these ordinances which are already written, okay? So with 90% of the work done, we'd be, you know, kind of short-sighted not to take it to the endpoint. So when this comes up the next time, expect it, and we'll include that in our process. Brian's on board with it, and he's perfectly comfortable with it, as is Eric. So I think this would be a good way to make sure we manage our money. Okay, that's the last item, and the next meeting is May the 2nd, and we'll have a go at some of these things again. So thank you, so on that note, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Ann?
I'm up to adjourn.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Book it in for the last.
Meeting adjourned.
Book it in for the last.